I call this meeting to order. This is the, um... We are building, building committee meeting and it's approximately five thirty-six P.M. If you want to speak, Pledge of Legions. Sorry, call me to order? I mean, the roll call?
We're not going to do the pledge of legions and the prayer?
Sorry, prayer, sorry. Sorry, my fault.
Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events and for all of our faculty, staff, and most importantly, our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly and we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. All glory be to you, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, uh, Madam President.
Esteban Rangel?
President.
Lupita Cepeda, President. Mercurio Martinez, Junior. Jorge J.D. Delgado?
Present.
Mr. Rangel, you do have a call.
Thank you. Item number three, update on current projects and future construction projects by Mr. Almedo Baez.
Good evening, Board members. Uh, today we are bringing you a update on the Laredo College Construction Projects for Phase Three. Uh, today is April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. So we have a number of projects that we're currently working on right now. And typically, this is a, um, a program phases that take place, uh, when we get ready to do our, our different construction projects. So we first assess the needs and the budget set aside for the jobs. We go into the programming and then to the design and that's coordination with ourselves, Laredo College, and the architect of the firm, uh, that has been awarded the particular jobs. Uh, in this case, we will be talking about mainly, uh, Abel City, which is Frank Architects and Mario Hasso, uh, Mario Peña. So after we have the program and we get into the design, we eventually get into a cost estimate. We submit the plans to the C.M.A.R. contractor, uh, and he has a certain timeframe. And at certain point, we reach a guaranteed maximum price that will be presented to the board. And then, of course, we go into the phase of the actual construction and building of the, of these different projects that we'll be discussing today. Okay, as you recall, uh, Laredo College Roofing Project, this project was currently, uh, recently brought to you all and approved. Uh, we will be working on the roofs at the south campus. We have a list of the different buildings that will be worked on, under the south campus list. Uh, of course, we have the, uh, the Williams and Billy Hall Student Center that we have done some work on already. Uh, we have just minimal, uh, items to attend to and also, also the, uh, the large breezeways that connect to Billy Hall that will be worked on as well. Uh, we will be also doing work on the Judas, uh, Center of Judith Saferini Library, the Academic Advanced Technology Center, Camino Prado Child Development Center, the Raquel Gonzalez Automotive Technology Center, and the Congress Henry Queer Protective Service Center and the J.C. Trevino Fitness Center. Along with this work, we will also be, uh, working on one particular building here at the main campus of Fort McIntosh. And it's right behind us on the east side of us, uh, and that is the bookstore facility. This project has been awarded to the American Contractors in joint venture with, uh, Tremco Roofing Products that will ultimately give us a twenty-year warranty. This project is based on a three-point-eight million dollar, uh, award, uh, contract. And the timeframe for construction is estimated at twelve months. We will work densely and, and hard to try to, uh, finish sooner, uh, permitting that we get, uh, good weather during the different phases on the different buildings. This is a little map, uh, site plan for, uh, the south campus. Apologize if it's a little blurry, it shows up a little blurry on my monitor here. But you could see, uh, buildings A, B, C, the D, E, uh, F, and G. Uh, Building A is Billy Hall. We've done some work, like I mentioned, uh, and we have minimal items to, uh, finish up on Billy Hall. And then we'll be moving on to, uh, the remainder of the, of the buildings. Uh, on the far right is the new facility, the Health Science Center, uh, and the improvements that took place with that particular job here recently. Another project that we're, uh, currently working on right now is the, um, the Laredo College South Campus Commercial Truck Driving Pad. This project has been awarded to Abel City Architects Firm. We are currently, uh, under design and eventually we'll move into construction documents. Uh, we keep in touch with them, uh, daily, uh, on the progress. Uh, we have gotten some preliminary plans already in hand to go ahead and review with the end-users, uh, and ourselves. We have an estimated budget of eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand for this project. Uh, we are going to be adding, uh, perimeter lighting for the pad, uh, which may affect the, the price, but we'll wait for our GMP to come in to see where, uh, where we come out at. This project is based, uh, on four to six months of construction time. And that time, we'll go ahead and start once the contract has been awarded, uh, to the contractor. This is a C.M.A.R. project. We will have a GMP, uh, price, uh, given to us by Line Decker Construction and we'll be bringing it to the board once we have that final number for approval. Here on your, on your monitor, you'll see that we have, um, some drawings that are being developed right now. On the far left is the, uh, the new proposed, uh, truck driving pad, uh, with a little bit more details, uh, we just finished getting this, uh, we just finished getting this drawing on Friday. We uploaded it today. And it shows you a little bit of the, uh, truck diagrams, uh, on the actual pad and some of the diagrams that, uh, they use, uh, to go ahead and do their testing during the course, uh, before they go to DPS to do their final, uh, exam. On the right-hand side, uh, it's, it's a kind of a joint image. But this is some of the improvements, uh, that we'll be doing for auto collision and diesel mechanic that we'll talk about a little bit more here. So another project that we have going on, also being worked on right now, is the Diesel Shop and the Auto Collision Center Expansion. This project has been awarded to Abel City Architects. Uh, we are currently under programming and design phase and we'll be moving into construction documents after we have a final approval on the layout of, uh, the particular expansions. We do have a two-point-three million dollar budget on this project. We have a timeframe of twelve months, once the contract has been awarded to the contractor. This is a C.M.A.R. project. Uh, we will be coming to you for a G, GMP approval, uh, once we get that number from Line Decker Construction of Texas. Here, I brought you all a, a diagram of, um, the different expansions. If you all can follow my cursor, you all, you all can see that? Up here in the far, uh, upper left-hand corner is the expansion. We have the, 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 the men's and women's restrooms with, uh, with dressing areas. Right behind that is an expansion for a, uh, tool, uh, supply, storage, equipment, storage area. Uh, they particularly have, right now, they do have an existing storage area, but it's very small. Uh, so we're expanding their, their storage, uh, area for the different tools and different, uh, equipment that they need to be secured at the end of day, uh, just most, most likely, uh, probably because of, of the value. Uh, they, they tend not to leave this equipment out in the open. Then we're adding these bays down here. So we have five new bays for trucks to drive in. We have a double, uh, door for pedestrian entrance and exit. Down here at the end of that, uh, expansion, we have a single door, uh, man door, uh, to exit the building also in case the overhead doors are closed. This particular yard right now exists along with this. We're, we're enclosing this area to expand the Auto Collision Center. This expansion is, uh, is being done to, uh, allow the students to work indoors instead of working out in the sunlight, uh, when they're working on different parts before they take it into, uh, the actual shop to, to, uh, to work a little bit further to add paint or whatever they may do to, to finish their work. We do have, uh, two existing bays down here. One of them right now is for metal welding and we will be adding a aluminum welding, uh, because they do, do work now with aluminum. So we'll have two different bays. They do need, need to be separated, so the, the metal one will remain and we'll be adding the aluminum. This small storage area will be used for any of supplies that they may need to store, uh, as well.
Mr. Baez, on, really quick on, on, on the middle part, what, what would be the use for, why wouldn't we use?
What area is that?
The, the, the middle part, the white part?
Uh, this area here?
Yeah.
They currently use that right now to, uh, to park different vehicles that are being worked on, uh, different projects that are going on. They have a container with tools out there in different parts. Uh, they have the recycle oil tank out there as, as well. Uh, but it's mainly used for circulation to get around the, around the building to the different, the different bays that currently exist up here. Uh, so we, we'll still be using it. It's a very large area, uh, so we're not making a, a huge impact by enclosing this area for auto collision. So this will remain, we are adding this gray shaded area as an open area as well. Uh, currently, they have their recycle oil, oil container out here in the open. So we're, we're, what we're doing is we're going to be bringing it down here and tucking it away from any traffic, uh, just for safety, for safety matters, uh, along with any other, any other items that they may want to store out of the way of traffic. This driveway here currently exists and we are adding this quick, three-bay, uh, quick lane service for tractor trailers as well. Two of them will have pits, uh, so the students will be able to service them underneath. Kind of like when you go to Jiffy Lube and change your oil, everything kind of goes on underneath your car. Uh, so this, this will have particularly, basically the same type of service. Uh, we're, we're expecting more development in this area because we still do not show the, the stair going down to the, to the pit. But that will eventually come as we, uh, move into further, further drawings.
Sorry, project, the funding for this project comes from where?
It's, uh, being funded by Phase Three. The bond, Phase Three bond money.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Where exactly in the south campus is this located?
Uh, it's located, it's located right now, um... If you orient yourself on the campus, it's on the west side of the campus, right next to, adjacent to the athletic fields. To the athletic fields.
Okay.
There's kind of a parking lot and driveway that run along the west side of the campus. That's auto mechanics, diesel, the diesel, the diesel shop and auto collision. They're kind of housing the same building right now.
So it's where the trailers are parked outside?
Yeah.
Old trailers, like, maybe they work on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So currently, we do have this driveway as well that exists and we're taking up a little bit of it and we'll re, be relocating the, uh, the rolling gate that they do have right now. Uh, and we're doing that to, to save ourselves some money as well. So I've asked the architect to go ahead and, and label it as to be reused, uh, and updated or anything that was roller, new rollers. But, uh, those gates are, are, are pretty expensive and, and I want to go ahead and reuse them. So they've been given instructions to, uh, to put that note on their construction documents. Okay, on this project, uh, the, uh, here at Fort McIntosh, uh, I'm, I know that you all are probably aware of the Law Enforcement Training Center that we've been talking about. Uh, and this has undertaken a lot of planning and coordination with the, uh, Border Patrol and Homeland Security. Uh, currently, we're under a Phase One that has already been going on, uh, that's assigned, uh, short-term lease with the Border Patrol. Uh, there was no construction needed for that. They are currently using, uh, facilities and spaces that currently exist on the campus. Once we go into a Phase Two, uh, that is currently, uh, being worked on and this is a long-term lease with Homeland Security, uh, and I'm sure Border Patrol are, are included in that package. Uh, that project will consist of renovations to the Lopez Nursing and the Ruben Garcia Allied Health Building. Uh, the construction, uh, and the scope is still pending. Uh, and that's, uh, going to be, uh, based on their needs and assessment of what it'll take to go ahead and, and have them operate in those buildings. We do have a one-point-two million dollar allocation from Facility Master Plan Phase Two for that particular building.
Chair, if you, please allow me?
Yeah, thank you. At, at this time, if you, please excuse me, I, I don't think it's time to get into this detail. We're not there yet for Phase Two and Three because we're still on the legal discussions with them. So these numbers here are really very, uh, preliminary and so very rough. So we're not there yet, so rather that we, if you allow, because of, uh, right now, it would be inaccurate, it's, it's far from it. And, uh, we just finished Phase One, which is a classroom and ex, and the existing building on the far end of the building.
On Phase One, how much did we spend?
Nothing, no. Phase One is just the use of an existing classroom. There, the Border Patrol is about to start that for a classroom. It's, that's where the, the nursing class was, one classroom on the far corner. And so, uh, that, just to get, get them started and they're paying us a lease and we got the legal documents already been done for, for a classroom.
Okay. This is just a, uh, again, just a schematic drawing, uh, for the facility. Uh, it's nothing definite, uh, yet, so... So two other projects that are also on Phase Three, uh, construction is the Security Safety Project. Uh, that contract is pending to be awarded. Uh, we're still undergoing programming and design, uh, for the facility cameras and the locations of each camera. Uh, there is an estimated budget of seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars and that is bond money in Phase Three. Uh, the construction timeframe will be, uh, all, uh, depending on the number of cameras and the locations and the scope, the final scope of work. There will be camera licenses that will be required, uh, upgrading of switches and data cabling, data storage equipment and surveillance monitors included in this, uh, scope of work for this project. The project on the bottom is a fiber infra, infrastructure project. Uh, this project is also pending to be awarded. Uh, currently, there is still, uh, programming and design work going on. We do have an estimated budget of one-point-five. This is also bond money on Phase Three. Construction timeframe is pending, depending on the scope of work. In Phase One of the project, we will relocate the D-mark, uh, currently located at the Arechiga Building. And it will come over to the, uh, the Martin Building. On Phase Two, excuse me, um, we will be sending out ten-gig fiber backbone service to particular buildings that do not have that service right now. Uh, during the water project, uh, that was completed recently with physical plant, we did include two four-inch conduits roughed in on the same service line, uh, right above the, the water line off to one side to be able to, uh, send in this, uh, this fiber line. Uh, so there has been a little bit of work done, uh, on this project. Uh, we also did include some, um, rough-in on some pool boxes that are usually, uh, roughed in at any intersection where we need to enter into a particular building.
Mr. Baez, really quick, um, you, you mentioned already in a couple of slides that you're pending to award project. Why are we pending? Is it, is it because of, you know, procurement process or what?
We're still, we're still, uh, working on gathering information. Uh, we don't have a, a definite particular company that, that we have in mind to award the project as of yet. So we're, we're gathering all the, the needs and assessing all the needs on these particular projects. And at that time, then, uh, it is, if it is, it turns out that it is a co-op or a buy board, uh, quote, uh, from a particular company that is certified, uh, we will then, uh, sit down and, and give them and, and work with them to get to a final construction number.
When do you think you're projecting to put these out there?
Uh, this, this has been going on, it's, uh, it's, it's in progress. Uh, I'm hoping here, Mr. Ramon's not here, uh, but, uh, I think we do have enough information already in our hands. Uh, so I think we can probably bring it here to you within sixty to ninety days with a, with a definite number. We do want to move on these projects because they, they have been on our, on our schedule for a while and, uh, we do need to, to jump on them and get, get them done.
On the ten gig of fiber, will that accommodate all the buildings that do not have fiber? And give us room to grow or?
This, this will accommodate the facilities that do not have that service right now.
And will it give us room to grow or we're just going to max it out?
We're, we're probably going to have, uh, a space to grow in it because it is ten gig compared to what we have now. So it is a, quite a bit of an upgrade to, compared to what we have right now. So that's my presentation. If you all have any questions, uh, we can go ahead and...
I have a question.
Yeah.
On, on the projects, do we go out for bids on architectural and construction? Or we automatically just assign to the ones that are on the, that have been committed?
Good afternoon, Cesar Vela, BP of Finance, for the record. Uh, yes, ma'am, uh, we actually issued out, uh, requests for qualifications for Phase Three. Uh, so we currently have, uh, this firm under contract right now, uh, for, as part of Phase Three, as well as, uh, a C-Mar that's also under contract for Phase Three.
And that's because it's bond money? That we have to have somebody assigned to it?
Yeah, we, we, uh, like I mentioned, we issued request for qualifications for architect firms.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and obviously, we had a group of firms, uh, uh, submit, uh, their qualifications. The board awarded contracts, uh, to those firms. So those are the firms that are currently under contract for Phase Three. And then we have, uh, the C-Mar. We issued out a request for proposals, uh, and again, Line Decker Construction is our C-Mar for Phase Three also contracts.
And this is through when?
Uh, through the end of the, of the bond three, uh, bond, Facilities Master Plan Phase Three contract.
Which could be what next? Yes. Okay. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Muir?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair and Board Members, Dr. Solis. So when the bond monies were approved to be spent by the voters, the Board of Trustees initiated the procurement process to secure, uh, a contractor that could construct all of the projects under Phase Three of the Facilities Master Plan. And there were several contractors that responded. Eventually, the board chose Line Decker Construction. And that was done pursuant to board policy and there's a statute that, that requires a certain procedure. Same thing was done for the architects at the time. The Board of Trustees had selected four different architectural firms to be assigned certain projects. And I believe since then that the authority was granted to the college president to make the assignment of... So if there's another project that comes up in Phase Three, then the college president makes that assignment. And it was four architects who were initially...
Who are those four architectural firms? Do we know?
Uh, y, yes, uh, it's Sepúlveda, uh, back then, Hiki Peñar, who has now merged with, uh, Frank Architects, which is now Abel City, uh, and Cabazos is the other firm.
You know, swinging a little bit on what Ms. Vela's saying, do we have a timeframe on, on Phase Three? On, on, on when we need to spend these bonds money?
Uh, right now, uh, we're, I believe, we're in year six, uh, uh, or we issued this bond in twenty-fourteen. So actually, we're, we're entering year seven.
So when do we need to spend it?
Uh, per se, we, we, the timeframe should be around five years again, but there... Yeah, we've exceeded that. Obviously, there were certain circumstances that, uh, were outside our control. Uh, at this point, like I said, the, the presentation that you're seeing here will take care of, uh, almost, uh, the remaining balance, which is around twenty-three million.
Well, I mean, that's a huge concern if we're already a year and we're probably going into the seventh year, you know? And, and I understand, I understand COVID, you know, probably took a, a huge one year, you know, into, into, into that. But i- it's, it's, it's kind of shocking and alarming that we're just sitting on monies that are not being spent, you know? And we need to be able to show the taxpayers where their bonding, uh, monies are going to.
Yeah.
So for me, it's just, you know, we're at year six, we're might, we might be going to year seven. You know, we need to expedite these projects because I'm thinking how much we ask for bond for these projects and how much it, you know, um, they've actually increased on, on, on costs, you know, for materials and, and all of that. So I mean, it's, 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 we're way behind. This is something that needs to be looked at very soon, you know, and, yes, uh, Judge.
Chairman, may I, may I, may I make an observation? Uh, part of this bond's originally, when it got promoted, okay? Uh, it included a major, major part of that bond money for a, uh, building dealing with the oil and gas facility, which was going to be built, uh, on campus. But it also, it included incredible equipment that was quite expensive. And I know, in this case, I know, uh, uh, Mr. Cepeda can, can, can provide some additional information because we personally went to see one of those facilities, uh, with the then-president, Dr. Maldonado. And, uh, to be quite candid, we were fortunate that we, it was decided not to build this because then we would have had a building that frankly would have had negligible use and it would have been money that had, that was not properly, uh, used for the benefit of this college. Uh, so frankly, we're very fortunate that that did not happen. And now we do have these other facilities that actually are going to bring in, uh, major revenue to, to, to our college. And that, of course, was, uh, the right decision that was, uh, done, done in this case by Dr. Solis.
Chair?
Um, yeah. Mr. Delgado?
Yep, um, Mr. Muir, if I can, um, if there's changes to the master facility plans moving forward, uh, as they weren't originally done or whatever was originally decided back when the bond was presented to the public, um, those contractors that you mentioned that are there, any changes that are made in the future, continue on with those same contractors or is the college allowed to go out for bids with other contractors?
Yeah. We've looked at that a couple of times, uh, a few, a few years ago. The selection of Line Decker Construction was to be the general contractor for the Phase Three Reconstruction Project. And when the assignment was made, it was done in a sense to give him the entire Phase Three project. So his projects have been modified, added, changed. My understanding is administration has consulted with bond counsel on that because there's a question about whether or not that can be done, but he's approved all the projects. And so the same contractor is going, if you decided to go with another general contractor, you would have to procure that service and that would involve... And that would involve going out for bids, uh, because you couldn't just select another contractor. And it could be done.
And, but, but my main concern is there was one contractor that was out there that merged with another. And so, why did we just approve that new contractor that was already there instead of going out for reaching out to another?
Now, that contractor, that one contractor is the general contractor, but I think those, those two entities are architects.
Okay.
And they're the ones that merged, uh, yeah, and so, as Mr. Vela had mentioned, and I think this merger, like literally just occurred in the last thirty or sixty days. But it was two architects that were on the approved list and then both of them joined together to form one business entity. And my understanding is that the board is gonna have to assign those contracts to that, to that new entity.
I was about to.
But it's the same contract. It's the same architects. It's just they formed.
I understand, but has that language been brought forward to the board for approval?
Uh, I don't believe that's been brought forward yet.
So, then everything that they're doing right now, sorry.
Go ahead.
So, everything that they're doing now, since it hasn't been done with board approval, is that still viable?
Well, well, it's the, it's the same architectural company, just another name. It, it's, it's a business entity, but.
So, it's the same tax ID number as it was before?
It's gonna be a, my, no, I don't have the details of the assignment. It was very recently brought to my attention. But my understanding that that would be a different tax ID.
So, then it would be a completely different company then?
It's a completely different company.
So, then their, this new company is not on the approved vendors list?
Uh, that entity was only very recently created and that list was assigned a few years back, over six years ago, right?
So, is it something we need to look at?
Yeah.
Well, when it was brought to my attention very recently, I suggested that an assignment be made. And that happened actually with a contractor. So, Line Decker Construction, this happened about three or four years ago. They changed business entities. They had, their company was called Line Decker Construction, Inc. And for tax reasons, they created another entity, Line Decker Construction is Texas. The board approved that assignment and that entity is.
So, both on the contracting company and the architectural company, like Mr. Elgato said, their tax IDs are.
Yeah, but, but again, the board approved the con, that all was disclosed to the board when it happened and the board approved of.
So, they approved the new Line Decker as well?
That's right, that's right.
But on the architectural side, we have not.
Uh, uh, and, yes, and again, my understanding that's a very, very recent development.
Okay. Now, if I understood correctly, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Uh, he did mention three architectural firms that were approved?
It was a total of four.
Four?
It was a total of four.
So, should we be sharing the wealth with all four or should we just be assigning to one?
Well, that would be a board decision and an administration decision, uh, for sure. And, and my understanding is, Mr. Vela may have some, you know, knowledge and Dr. Solis about this. But at some point during the course of the, of the master plant facilities, construction phase three projects, that that was delegated to the college president, I think. So, the college, the board, in other words, delegated the authority, said, here's a pool of architects. You choose what architects get, the projects, yeah. That delegation was done by the board, I know, through a vote and approved, yeah.
Okay. Um, one question on the, on the bond, uh, past the fif- fifth year. Are we paying any, any fees or anything, or how, how would that work, Mr. Vela? If we're exceeding the, I guess, the five years that you're saying, five, six years?
Currently, right now, uh, we're, uh, our interest rate, uh, is, the interest rates are actually, uh, again, uh, low. So, fortunately for us, we have not gotten into that situation where we have to pay back some of those, some of that money. Again, every year, we do a review and it's submitted that we have a third-party company that comes and reviews our bonds, does a calculation and determines whether there is a penalty on, on the interest that is being generated by those funds. Uh, but so far, at this point, uh, there, there have been no penalties.
Uh, Chair? Yeah, Mr. Solis.
No, on the contrary, but we have benefited from being very prudent, this board, in, in allowing us to, to wait and evaluate and allow administration to prioritize. And we're very fortunate that, we're glad that we did that and being visionary and anticipating changes instead of going on along with the original proposal on the bond monies that were done six, seven years ago. And uh, I'm glad that we did that and the board was, allowed us to do that because there were several projects there that at, by, at this time would not make any, any sense, to put it nice, uh, strictly, to build such as the oil and gas, such as a studio union building. I can go on and on on projects that at the time when they were conceived made sense. But it's a good thing that this board, we waited and we, we prioritized and reassessed what it are, our needs are. And that is why we have a surplus of bond money still available, which is allowing us to do especially this, uh, this trucking, this transportation project and others. And, and, and so, it allowed us to do even some smaller ones, uh, from, from the cosmetology. I can go on and on on other projects that allowed us to go into programs that we'd never anticipated. And so, I'm glad that this board was visionary, anticipating.
Any questions?
And, and, and thirdly, I'd like to mention also that by waiting, also, we lowered substantially the rate. As you recall, we had a, a in detail report, uh, the interest rate. And on for, on top of that, we also generated interest as well from those bonds. So, it's been a win-win and it's a good decision on the board to await it this time. But yes, I agree with the, with your original statement. We need to move faster so, uh, to deliver on the goods, on the promises that we made to the community and using their taxpayers' money for the benefit of the community. Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions?
I think we, uh, does that, we don't have another presentation?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we have another presentation. Sorry.
Sorry. It's not, it's not in the aisle, but.
Uh, good evening, Board Members. This is Orlando Zepeda, Director of, uh, Plant Operations and Maintenance, uh, for the record. Uh, what I'm gonna do is, is, is go over briefly, as briefly as I can, our, our current physical plant projects. We've got five, five ongoing projects and a new project that we, we're trying to propose. Uh, the, uh, as, as, uh, was mentioned before, the water lines installation portion of the project is complete. All meter installations are back in service. City inspection has also co- been completed.
We need new mics.
The project cost was about four hundred and thirty thousand, uh, one twenty-six. Uh, the only pending item is a sidewalk restoration between the Alerechica Hall and the Administration Annex Building. And that's a projected cost of another twenty thousand that was not part of the original scope. Um, funding for this portion of the project is pending. In that, in, in between those two buildings is where, uh, Homer might have mentioned on the pre, on the, that we laid some, uh, pre-laid some, uh, uh, four-inch conduits for the, for the movement of the, of the IT center to the Martin Building that came right down the middle. So, I showed some pictures here. Uh, we basically started at the, uh, at the athletic housing, came around and connected some. The, the reason for the, actually, this, this project was to replace old cast iron pipe that had been, that had not been addressed, uh, since, I guess, when this campus was, was formed. Um, so, we, we, it took us about a, about a year and a half to, to, uh, survey every, where all this pipe was and what it was servicing. And we, uh, uh, abandoned some pipe, replaced obsolete fire hydrants. And so, it was quite a, quite a complex project that we, we, uh, accomplished. And, um, so, the city is happy with what we did. Uh, the other project is, um, the, in the central plant, um, but, uh, we had to replace a secondary pump, uh, which is kind of like a backup pump to the, uh, that circulates chiller water uh, on all the connected buildings. And, um, you'll see the picture. It's pretty, it was failing. The valves were not holding. And to do that, we had to, uh, we had to isolate the, 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 the chiller tank and the thermal tank. And, um, but the valves were stuck, so we didn't try to force them. So, we now, uh, we decided that we, we have to replace those valves. And it's at, uh, we're doing a special, um, what they call, like, we were freezing sections of the line to, to stop the tank from draining. And so, then, once we get that, that done, we can then, uh, do the, uh, pump, uh, replacement. The, it's a board, uh, uh, buy board cost, uh, done by train, uh, a total of a hundred and sixteen thousand eighty-two. Valves is a hundred, sixty-one thousand and the pumps about fifty-five thousand. We're, we're, uh, we're now, we're given, actually, this morning, a wa- a window of, uh, of mid-May. Uh, it'll probably take us a whole weekend to do both, both projects, both, uh, installations. Um, here's a picture of the, 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 the picture on the right is the, um, is the two, uh, tank lines coming in and those valves, you see there, is the ones that are frozen, um, frozen open. We can't close them. Um, and then, in the middle is the old pump there. It's all rusted up. It, it is not, it's failing. It's leaking. So, on the left is the new one that, that's pending installation. Uh, as y'all recall, the winter storm in late February, um, we, um, had the considerable, considerable amount of damage to, uh, in, uh, actually, we were, we were lucky. We, we had, uh, three air handlers in the, uh, in the Cigarroja Science Complex. Um, and we now are in the process of, uh, of restoring, uh, uh, the, the air handlers and the, um, uh, and doing some ducting work. And of course, that night, we had to do a lot of cleanup and so, it's quite a mess. The, the, uh, buy board cost to, to do all the repairs is about a hundred, a hundred and ninety-four thousand seven hundred. The estimated air handler coil arrivals is at the end of May. Repairs are estimated to be completed by the end of June. But in the meantime, we've been doing re- uh, replacement of ducting, uh, any, any, all the equipment that, that got damaged and all that. So, by the end of June, we'll have that, that whole wing back up to service. Um, here's some pictures that are pretty dramatic. Uh, that, that picture in the middle with the waterfall, it's actually the water pouring, uh, from this. As usual, this always happens in the wrong place. It happened in the second, second floor, uh, air handler. So, that was a leak. And then you'll see on the left, the, the leaking, uh, air handler and pouring out into the, into the hallway, then down into, down into the first floor and. And, and the culprit was that, that picture up on, up, up on the right is, uh, all those are, are coil, uh, it's like your radiator on your car. You know, we pump water through them and they, they, they run air through them to, to chill the air. And that was the, the only one we could take a picture of, but that's, you see, you see the, uh, the tube, uh, ruptured. And, um, we were lucky actually because, um, we know other universities, uh, like Texas State, they lost twenty-two air handlers. We only lost three. Um, uh, UT Reru Grande won, lost sixty-one. As a result, uh, all these cores that you see, the one that's ruptured, they're all backordered and we, we can't expedite it. So, it's, it's taken us this long to, to get the, the parts and, and the cores in. Uh, then we got these, uh, two, uh, building, uh, uh, interior buildout of P fourteen. Uh, we're working on a lease agreement with the Imaginarium of South Texas. The, uh, uh, project cost is about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty thousand by the college and the Imaginarium is gonna pitch in a hundred and seventy thousand. Um, funding for the project is allocated from, under the facilities master plan phase two. Construction timeline after lease agreement is, is finalized is about nine to ten months. The, uh, the Imaginarium has already had an, uh, gotten a, a temporary extension for a year at the mall at, uh, some, uh, more reduced rate. The P twenty-four retrofit, um, we're working on a lease agreement with the Department of Public Place, uh, of Public Safety. Uh, this, this project will cost about two hundred and twenty thousand. Initial cost to be covered by College General Operating Funds. The cost will be reimbursed by DPS. Construction timeline is four to six months after lease agreement is finalized. Um, this is a, this is a, a, a new proposed, uh, project that, um, it's the MFA, the Medina Sign Arts, uh, Auditorium, uh, HVAC system is twenty-one years old. Um, so, we've, we've already done studies on, on what the, the different options we have. Um, the base option is just replace the old interior HVAC equipment and the exterior standalone chiller plant. That cost is projected to be at one point seven to two million. Now, that, we, we have an, uh, a, a, what I would call a best option is, uh, for energy savings is to install a second thermal tank, connect and consolidate the, uh, the MFA, the LIAC and the VPA under one chiller plant with thermal storage tank using the expanded L- LIAC and Visual Performing Arts chiller plants. Um, currently, the, the two, the LIAC and the Visual Performing Arts have a separate aerial system and the MFA also, uh, has its own separate. So, um, these, these, these plants are not as efficient as, as like what we have connected through the rest of the campus. Um, the cost, the, the cost to install a thermal tank and, and do the, all of the connecting is about four point nine to six million. Uh, now, part of the scope of getting that, like, if we, we go up for the first base project, um, uh, Train will, will, uh, has also said that we'll do a, 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 a study to tighten up the numbers and also look at the economics. Now, a third, a third option, uh, would be like doing, uh, technically doing option two, but without the thermal storage tank. The, the projected cost is three point six, four point five million. Pending is the funding source. Now, you know, I, it, the reason I, I, I'm thinking, say, that, that, that they, that the second option is good is that we realize a lot of energy savings by, uh, how we run the chiller operation and that's connected to the rest of buildings. These three buildings comprise about twenty-five percent of the square footage of the campus. So, we're basically not protected from ERCOT rate variations when there's these, uh, four CP rate, they ask us to, to, uh, cut, uh, consumption, which we can't between the hours of three and seven o'clock at night in June, July, August, even September. Uh, so, uh, those three buildings keep running. What we do it, with the, the way we operate the rest of the system is that we operate the chiller, we generate chiller water with a, with a one point two five million barrel, uh, gallon tank. We, we, we operate the, the, the high horsepower chiller plants, generate chiller water. And during the day, we just circulate the, that, that, that water we used at a much less consumption of horsepower. So, we're, we're able to, to, and also, we use our, our EMS, uh, Energy Management System that we installed about two thousand and fifteen to do, uh, we can do building controls, zone controls, areas that are not being used, buildings that are not used, we shut them down. But we don't have that, we don't have that option in those three buildings. Those three buildings have to run twenty-four, seven. So, the idea is to connect them all and, and do the same thing we do at that twenty-five percent of the campus that we do with seventy-five percent of the campus. Over the long haul, uh, we have seen the, the savings we've realized from, from the way we operate the, the current chiller plant. So, we could probably duplicate this thing and probably realize, uh, I can't, we'd have to do a, a more in-depth analysis, but, but we're pretty certain that, that the, that second option would probably pay for itself. I mean, it wouldn't be a payout like a corporate would want three or four years, but, but we're gonna be around for a long time. It might be ten years, then twelve years in payout. So, there's the one picture. The, the other issue with the, with the MFA is that the, the systems are Johnson Controls, they're not like the rest of the two campuses is trained. That system is obsolete, the controls, Johnson Controls are obsolete, we can't get parts for, for the, for the control system. That's, that's the control panel for the MFA, it's all. So anyway, that's, any questions?
Any question? How much work is it, is being done in-house from, from both ends, from Mr. Pies and Mr. Cepeda? Unlike any of these projects? Are any of them being done in-house?
We do, I couldn't tell you exact numbers, but we do, we have quite a, a good crew of technicians, you know, carpenters and painters and, you know, electricians and all that. We do a, a lot of the work, but, but what we, what we can't, when it, when it becomes a little bit bigger than our capacity, we usually use, we have a group of small-time contractors that we can contract and we bid out, you know, if it's over a certain amount, we bid out to smaller contractors to do some specific work, electrical work or, or, you know, HVAC work, things like that. But, but our HVAC contractor, you know, happily is, is, is buy-board. So we, we do a lot of work through them, with them. They're like top-three international industrial air conditioning company in, in North America. So, but we do, we do quite a bit. I mean, a lot of repairs and alterations in all the buildings, we do it ourselves, paint, carpentry, electric, rod stuff.
It's more like specialized work, the one that you self-contract out?
We, you know, it's, it's, some of these old houses, you know, you walk in and you kind of look around, it's, what do we do, you know? But our guys are pretty adept at fixing, they just think, okay, we need to do this and that, and they go in there and, and I, I'll give you, for instance, when we did the, the P nine, which is the president's home, we got a bid to, to, to do it for about one point three million.
Yeah.
And I think we did it like for under four hundred thousand.
Four hundred, yeah.
About five hundred thousand, four hundred and something.
Yeah.
But, but it goes like that for a lot of the buildings and, and it, one of the benefits out of that, that we do a lot of in-house is that our, our guys like to do that, you know? They, they, they like to get out there and, and, and work and, and do a lot of this and they're happy, we keep them happy doing that.
The pride in their work definitely shows around the campus, that's for sure.
And Chair, if I may? Yeah, Mr. Vela.
I wanted to ask, and I don't know if this has ever been considered, discussed, but I know the, the current president, the Biden administration talks about a lot about a green energy initiatives. Has that ever been discussed or analyzed, surveyed in any way as far as we're here? If any possibilities do exist with regards to green energy initiatives?
I'm sorry, with the mask.
Green energy initiatives? As far as solar, wind, anything of that sort, has that ever been discussed? I know it talks a lot within the Biden administration.
You know, like solar panels and, and in fact, I, I, I think we may have an option that there's a solar farm being built. We, we may, when we renegotiate our, our electricity contract, we may, we may ask that, that we get part of that supply in here.
You referring to the one from Webb County?
Pardon?
Are you referring to the one from Webb County?
Yeah.
I believe they just initiated a contract with a piece of land somewhere out.
We, we, we have looked at and then probably as time goes by, we might look at more buildings to, to put, you know, solar panels on, on some of these buildings that, that, that we could take advantage of. But yes, that, that, that in the future, I think is, is going to be something we're going to seriously look at.
And when? When?
I can't, I can't give you the second, but soon.
All right.
When's, when's our contract up for electricity?
I believe we just renewed it last year or two years ago?
Yeah, so.
Okay. All right. And then I guess, Chair, if I may, just with regards to the Imaginarium, I know it's, board has been told that the leasing agreement is in the process. When is the ETA on that for completion or at least presentation?
We just, I, I happen to be on the board, we just kind of like detailed at least the, the, the basic terms.
Okay.
That we got to, that we're going to propose to the college. We, we've discussed it already, but the board of the Imaginarium approved the, the basic bullet points that, that.
Your request.
Tomorrow or the next day, I'm going to visit with the, with Rusty to, to, to begin that process. We're hoping we don't get a very complicated contract.
Definitely. And construction start date, do we have that?
Actually, we, we've already kind of started. We're, we're, we're coming in with the sewer connection already. We, we, we have actually started surveying where we're going to hook up that building because it, it had an old connection, again, cast iron and all that. So we found a, another source and we're going to come in from, from the end of the highway because we, we're also relocating the two bathrooms to one end of the building. And so we're coming in from that end. And so our guys already looked at that and, and we're all, and, and in fact, that cost has already been, we're the ones that generated that cost with some, you know, the, you know, HVAC subcontract, electrical subcontractor, because it's big enough that, that we're going to oversee it, but we have small little contracts with, with some of the local contractors.
With that being said, so then your staff is going to be working on that project?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, sir. Exactly. Primarily, we'll be using our internal staff.
It's just the, the specialized, yeah, I guess, technic, technical things that they might do, like the elevator and all that, that's specialized on, on just subcontracting it out.
The, the elevator is kind of like a standalone thing, it's like a tower, you know, it doesn't, doesn't depend on the structural of the building. It's like a tower they put in with a foundation and it's completely, yeah.
When is that MOU coming to, to the board?
It's this week, this week. In fact, if you see on, on ID, that will be a discussion and action to, to move forward to the next step, if you see here, using our master facilities plan to savings, that's our bond money for the interior renovation of P fourteen and delegating authority to administration to negotiate the lease agreement with the Imaginarium.
On this, on this?
Yes, in two days, that will be. Once we get that finalized with legal, we will continue, accelerate the pace of the, of the renovation of the building.
Any questions?
Can I ask a question? On the MFA, Dr. Solis, have we looked into, we have bond money to start working on that?
What that is?
It's, it's a beautiful facility and I know in the past, we have leased it out and I'd hate to be leasing it out and then the AC goes out.
That is a concern, that's why we were addressing it, although we, we, we knew about this issue a year before the pandemic, but because of that, we haven't, we haven't used it. But that's why we're looking at the options, as you correctly pointed out. We know that it's twenty years old, that HVAC and needs to be replaced.
HVAC system is like twenty-one years old.
Well, we just, we just heard that we have some bond money. I mean, can we use that type of bond money? To be able to, can you go back to that slide just to see how much it was?
Yes.
So can we use bond money or we can't?
We're, we're currently working on the funding. We have looked at utilizing phase three bond money. However, based on the projects that have been allocated, we would not have enough to do option two. So right now, there is word that we're receiving another round of CARES Act funding that may be used for this type of, of retrofits or, or. So we're looking at that, if that funding is available for us to be able to use towards this project. Again, that's right now preliminary, but as far as bond money, we have identified, but like I mentioned, right now, we would be only able to cover possibly option one, which would be just replacing the equipment.
Would you, do you honestly think that the CARES Act will allow us to invest in this?
I know that, that it's, there's a component there for air quality that allows for upgrades to HVAC systems. Again, I don't know at this point, I don't have all the details. It may be that we may not be able to do option two with CARES Act money, but we could free up the one point seven to two million for the equipment out of, purchases out of the CARE, CARES Act and do the rest with the bond money that has been freed up. So again, that's, those are the options that we're looking at right now. Again, bond, utilizing bond, money from phase three and possibly using some of the CARES Act for, from round, what we say, round three. But again, we have not received that yet.
Well, it's something that we need to look at, especially if we're over the years of, of that bond. I mean, it's, I think it's just, let's just use the money into, like you said, you know, the, the, the oil didn't work out. Well, then let's just invest it into the current buildings that are being utilized, you know, or that are, we're looking into being utilized within the future. I mean, so we could spend that money. That's my opinion.
Yes, I, we agree. It's a difficult decision, which is why we have waited. Now, the, the CARES Act money, I'm, had, it has baffled us many times in a good way because it, it has surprised many of my other colleagues at other colleges that they eventually do get specific projects funded, like the number one, as you pointed out, that perhaps, I see that as a better possibility than the second one because it's a much larger project that entails many buildings to use, to, to get the CARES Act. However, for the number one, the, the two million for just a standalone HVAC for the MFA is more possible. Right, just right now, we're waiting and waiting to make sure we get clarity. However, I'm optimistic that it will be, but we, again, it isn't a hundred percent. And now, on the other hand, we could be able to get some monies from our bond money to move for the number one, again, only, a standalone for the MFA. Because that is correct, a very valuable asset that the college and no, nobody else in Loretto has.
Beautiful building.
And we don't want to let it, let it go down. Fortunately, we have not had to use it for the past twelve months, but we need to get ready.
We need to, yeah, you just mentioned it right now, Dr. Solis, we need to get ready for it.
Yes.
Because it will start to be, to, to getting used. So we need to be ready for that. Any other questions?
I mentioned that Train has offered to do a, a more in-depth study to get the, the numbers tighter and possibly even a payout on, on, on realizing the, the second option. I, I strongly think that, that, that that's probably the best option so that we can then have the whole campus under what we call shedding the load in the night. And we've realized a lot of savings with the way we operate the, the rest of the campus, but we were exposed with those three buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
And I want to go ahead and thank Mr. Pies and Mr. Cepeda, great presentation. And motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So motion by Mr. Vela, second by Ms. Cepeda. Thank you all for being here.